Good evening. I call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, October the 3rd, 2019, 6:00 PM. We're at Carabelle City Hall. I'll ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer, then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, so let's all stand.
Our Godfather in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this opportunity to come together tonight in this assembly and to deal with those things that pertain to all of our lives. We ask you to be with us in all wisdom and judgment, for we might do that which is most appropriate. We're thankful for those that have come to be with us tonight, that can share us with their ideas and their opinions, and we hope that our meeting will be collegial and that we'll be able to accomplish much in your name. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I see some faces that we don't normally see, and we're glad you're here and welcome. I'll remind you, like I normally do, to please speak into the microphones, especially those that come to the podium, and please turn your phones down. So we have the consent agenda now with the September 5th minutes, the September 11th first-budget minutes, the September 23rd, 2019, final-budget minutes, the September 23rd special-meeting minutes, and the attorneys' invoices for the month of August. Did you all review all of these documents? Are there questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, so we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And then we move right into public comment. Public comment. Does anyone have -- okay, we have Mr. Steve Allen. Just say your name for the record, please, sir.
Hello. I'm Steve Allen, and I am the president of the Carabelle Lighthouse Association, and I'm here to make general announcements for events coming up this month at the lighthouse, and then a special announcement about a recent activity that we did in Tallahassee. We have three events coming up. This weekend, we have the first, we hope to be several outdoor farmer's markets this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And then on the 13th of October, we have the Full Moon climb, and O'Neil will be performing for that, and some s'mores of bonfire and full moon climbs at night. The gift shop will be open. And then, always as usual, in October, we look forward to the birthday of the Quikbitter Lighthouse with Lantern Fest, and we hope to have entertainment. That event is on Saturday, October the 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. We've been doing that for 10 years. We're going to have some blacksmithing, stargazing performers. Aisha Ivy and Stephen Hodges will be there, and Tallahassee Community College Dance Truth that always comes and entertains the two shows, one the night show, and it'd be very nice, it always is up there on the hill. And then, really, one of the reasons why I seldom get up here and announce all the activities at the lighthouse, but back in May, with great support and help from Cameron Allen, we put together a grant for the Division of Historic Resources for the painting and repair of the tower, and the painting and repair of the accessible ramp and the two buildings that own the property. And we submitted that in May, at the end of May, and then a crew of us went last week and defended it to the commission, and we ranked 12th in the state, which is well within the funding category, so we hope and feel like that we have a good chance of getting funded for that project. It will be, we will have direct scaffolding around the tower, do the repair on the structural issue at the top, have it repainted and sandblasted, and then we'll also do that for the museum, gift shop, and washhouse. Embrace. So, yay.
Fabulous. Right, 12th in the state.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Do you all have any questions? Okay. All right, so we'll move forward now. We have still public comment. I see another hand raised there, sir, if you'll come forward and state your name.
My name is John Harris. I reside at four, three, Southeast 11th Street here at Carabelle. I have a presentation concerning dilapidated property and structures behind my house falling down.
I have a copy of each of you, the photographs.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have lived in that location that I just mentioned approximately 19 years, and the adjoining property directly behind my house has been unoccupied for 18 years. When I moved there, there was a couple that moved out, and again, that was back in 2000. The property is a double-wide mobile home with the address of 408 10th Street, Southeast Carabelle, Florida. The subject property has been unoccupied, like I said, for approximately 18 years, and in total, this repair, the roof has collapsed in the last couple of years, and the interior of the home is possibly resident to four-legged creatures. According to the public records, the property said, "The subject property is owned by Jack Weiss and Ruth Ann Ritz." Summary of my correspondence that you have in front of you with the city officials who started back in 2016, I contacted Keisha Messer, who, in my telephone conversation with her, I described the property, said property, and being of nuisance as well as a health and safety hazard. She explained to me, Ms. Messer explained to me, the condemnation process during the call, and I brought her my contact information and offered her any assistance. I'm not going to sit here and read this to you, because all of you have it in front of you, I'll just skip around. Through other telephone calls with Keisha and the, my wife also making the call, and also I had called from my office to find out what was being done about this property that's been unoccupied for 18 years. The next contact I had was with Mayor Brenda Lepoz, and I explained to her in detail, and then this year, I received an email that she sent out about dilapidated properties in, nuisance properties in Carabelle. And I also researched, on September 18th, 2019 of this year, I researched the city of Carabelle, as well as the Franklin County building permit portos, and did not locate any building permits issued to Weiss, or Ritz, or subject property, or any combinations thereof. I come to you today in front of the city commissioners to please consider these issues and vote affirmative to notify the subject property owners that they have dilapidated structure and to be removed from the property. It is my hope that, coming to you before today, that the city Carabelle commissioners will take immediate, appropriate action and rid this neighborhood of ultimately our community of this known health and safety hazard to maintain the aesthetics of the property. Also, and I had put inside as an insert, my neighbor that lives right beside me, he sent me a letter, and it's enclosed in your booklet as well, about the property, and that was dated September the 30th, he sent that to me, which was last week, and it enclosed all the pictures that I took with a drone flying over the property. At this time, I'll leave it with you, and I'm concluding.
Okay. Well, I just, welcome, Mr. Harris, I'm glad you're here. And I do want to say, and you're aware of it, I have sent you all the emails, I have, I've prepared a document with the, one picture I had of this house that I went and took from the street and zoomed in, and it looks similar to one of those pictures you had. And I had five structures total, I made a report and a document, and sent it to the clerk and to, I believe, to the city administrator back in summer of 2018, and actually, I have sent that to them, best I can remember, four times, as a, you know, trying to remind them that we've got these structures, and out of that, we have, at this point, one structure has been removed on the corner of Three Rivers Road and West 3rd Street, but I see this one has really gotten worse since last year. I mean, do we have to, we don't generally have motions under the public comment, but since this has been ongoing for so long, and the staff has been alerted of it, too, Mr. Hartman, can we just go ahead and direct staff to begin condemnation proceedings and have this building removed? This is a, this is a rough site over there.
And also, I can't get these kind of pictures, because I can't use these pictures for code enforcement case either, because that's, you can't go onto property owners' property, and because it's in the back, and he, they didn't feel like it was as bad as it is, I've never seen it this bad.
Well, the drone, I let the drone down and took my pictures directly in, and also over talking to the property as you have in your brochure, I mean, your.
And I think I was able to get a picture, that might be my picture that I sent with you in the email with all of the other houses or not, but I have a picture very similar to that one, to last year.
Now, the property owners were very adamant that they did not want it removed.
But what do you do when it's falling apart like this?
Okay. I mean, doing a, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is, I think, especially, and that's good information, that you have the property owner pulling one direction, and adjacent property owners pulling another in the city, pulling, is, think of this like when we had the Crumfish House that we were struggling with, because the way this would unfold is now, you know, we're complaint-driven, now we have a complaint, which we had complaints before, but now we're very focused on it, right?
We've got a formal complaint, yes.
So, we send in the notice of violation, that they have to correct it within a period of time, they're not going to, we can guess, assume benefit, but they do great. If they don't, then, you know, we begin the finding process, but as a city, we have rarely taken upon ourselves to do the demo, calling off, and everything else, because of the expense.
Without the.
Without the owner's consent.
Owner's consent.
And in this case, let's pretend we don't get that, there's always a tough first, but we then, we have to allocate money, so it's not something that we're gonna, it's not free to the city, we have tip and fees, and maybe estimates.
That's right, and we didn't have money in our code enforcement.
Yeah, we do have money for some, it's great.
We made money for that, because we've got several houses.
And so, we need to, we need to then probably prioritize, if there's five properties.
I think a couple of them have been boarded up, or they're working on them, and one has been removed, this summer was removed, a couple months ago removed.
But it won't move as fast as Mr. Harris would like, but at least we can, but I think we need to follow the process so that if the homeowner pushes back.
Right, they come in and pull the permia, but apparently no work was ever done.
I researched earlier this month permits, I've tried.
It wouldn't be under that portal, though, because it was a different company that was doing it at that time.
Because I researched two weeks ago, and I did Franklin County portal, I did the Carabelle portal, I used both their names in different places.
It wasn't there for those.
And I've used also their address, and I still could not come up with that property.
If it's that.
Also, let me just throw this out at you. If somebody refuses to remove, and we're worried about the money, and the city has to pay for it, could you subject their property to a lien?
Yes, that's what ultimately would happen. But the question is, and we've had this before, it's not the first time, is we're out of pocket, we're out of the money.
Okay.
And again, you say, I don't know if it sits on multiple lots or anything else, and times are getting better, but if you say, hey, it's going to cost $15,000 or $10,000 to haul it off, the lot's worth five, you know?
There's actually, I think there's either five or six lots.
Five or six lots, it says, so good. I mean, those are all factors that we need to consider.
It won't, it won't be that cost, no.
Okay, so.
Maybe 1,500 or 2,000.
Good.
But these property owners, they just keep saying, there's nothing wrong with this house, it can be fixed, and I can't see it, like, with the drone, you know, so.
We then also have to coordinate with the county, because we don't do the condemning, the county building department will do the condemning.
Now, once you contact them and say they're in violation, can they then come back and apply for another building permit?
They could.
See, that's the problem, Mr. Harris.
But the truth is, they have to fix the violation, and from the pictures, it looks like they're gonna have their hands full fixing the violation, and it's also probably good to get the county building department involved.
Isn't there something that has to do with, maybe it's just hurricanes, that if to fix up the property costs 50% of the value of the property?
That's a flood.
In a flood sound.
Flood, so. And sorry, to answer your question on the research, too, I think what Messer was getting at is, we had a private company doing the building permitting in the city at that time called EPCI, and they kept, they were private, so they didn't have, they weren't part of the public portal.
They did that from about October of 17 to maybe the summer of 18 somewhere.
Okay, and this is back in '16? Or I don't know when it was.
Well, it's been ongoing, yeah, quite some time.
But we had, in addition to the city being part of it, the county being part of it, we had a private company in there also.
Okay.
So that may, may explain the reason you're not finding anything. But, yeah, we should just follow notice violations as the starter and follow the process.
Yeah, we should be able to start a process.
And follow it through to the.
Should we send the building inspector out and see if he, if you want, if they want to condemn it, or can we give them a chance to?
I think it's the notice of violation, telling them it's become a nuisance, and really, yeah, it's become a nuisance, and, you know, threat to public health, safety, blah, 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 and then they have 30 days, 15 days, how long do we have to?
Normally, it's 60 days.
Okay, so they've got 60 days to fix the problem and notify us that they.
But we can give them less time, I mean, that's.
We give them, I mean, I think the, I don't know, 30 days.
But once they pull the permia, that gives them 18 months.
I'm not.
They have six months to get started on.
I think if they've got a dangerous condition out there, they have to render it no longer dangerous, and then the county building inspector can go out there, if they say, hey, we've done it, then the county building inspector can go out there and say, you have or you haven't fixed it up.
I think we should give them 30 days, they have been notified before.
That's, I agree.
Okay.
It is.
And they don't live far from here, so they, it's not.
So then, after that notice, then the building inspector, building inspector needs to come out?
And condemn it.
Okay.
And then we can take the next steps to.
After the 30 days.
To fix it, or take the situation ourselves, and have a money budget to it.
Is that, how does that seem, Mr. Harris?
That sounds fair, if I didn't throw $100 to your budget, I'll do that, too.
Okay. All right, since we can't, you know, if it, we'll give them the notice to see what happens, and if need be, we'll put this as an agenda item.
And hold it to the $100, I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you all of you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Skip, come on up and tell us your name.
My name is Skip Frink, local citizen. I understand this is not a question period, but my statement is a question to be answered whenever it can get answered. Kathy and I got back from vacation last week, and half a dozen people have come to me as if I could answer this question, and said, what's going on with the Georgian motel? I have no idea what's going on there. People seem to feel that the same people seem to be there day after day after day, a lot of kids, and that it has the look of a family, a family apartment complex, you know, kind of a thing. The question is, is that the appropriate zoning for lodging, short-term, you know, lodging that I thought we all agreed on?
Well, I'll tell you, I have the same question to myself, you know, and I, I say, what's going on with the Georgian motel? I drive by, I drive by, I drive by, I'm looking, I see the same appearance that you see, I spoke with the city administrator, she drives by, she sees the same thing, the attorney has been alerted, in fact, the administrator today just circulated a video from that meeting back in February of 18, where the special exception to have a motel was approved. And do you have input on this yet?
I will, I'm gonna, I'm aware of what you just mentioned, I literally just received today some of the materials that I'm gonna use, and I'd really forgotten, I had dealt with a different attorney that represented Mr. Carnegie, the one who bought the Georgian, but it reminded me in the video that Steve Watkins represented him locally, so I'm gonna reach out to Steve Watkins tomorrow and advise him that they received a special exception for a motel, not any sort of long-term or, you know, facility, I mean, this is, this was something that was talked about in a lot of detail, and promises were made at that meeting as far as the conditions and the premise of the special exception we gave them, and it would appear, based on some of the stuff I've seen, and certainly the stories, but you've always got to be careful of stories, but, you know, to, that it's not being used as a motel. And if that's the case, I'm sure you can straighten it out.
It's your microphone.
Well, it's, just in case nobody is aware of the fact that Carabelle Harbor is the jewel in the center of this city, and I personally, of course, no, no problem with people having a place to live, but it may not be best to be right there on the waterfront.
The point why we went through as much detail as we did to grant that special exception was exactly that concern, so, and that's what I think has folks agitated, because anybody who followed that or watched the video or anything else of that meeting, it was guaranteed to us that it would be operated as a motel, like a Hotel Six-type motel.
Is there a definition of transient lodging?
There is, and that's obviously, as is typical, I don't know how this is going to go, but we're going to get into the details of some of that, but it's.
Good, thank you.
It needs to be a traditional motel, not.
Okay, all right, and thank you, and I sent you some questions today on that transient wording and what we might give.
Yep, I saw that.
Okay, all right, so I'll ask again, then, is there any other public comment? This is the only time during the meeting that anyone will be able to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, so if I see some odd faces, they're not odd to me, I know them, but they're not normally here, if anyone has anything to say, this is the time to speak up, otherwise, we're going to move forward with the commissioners' reports. Okay. Commissioner Allen, do you have a report forwards today or anything to say?
I would just add that in relation to the comments we made last time on the Housing Authority, I'm no longer on the board.
Okay.
I have been dismissed.
Oh, right. Do you have a letter saying?
I'll give you a couple, a couple of the phone numbers.
Okay. You have anything else?
No.
All right, thank you for that. Commissioner Mathis?
I have nothing.
Okay, and Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Melander?
No, ma'am.
All right, I do have a report, and I just want to say that I'm proud to announce that our Carabelle webcam that overlooks the Carabelle River from Seaquarters Marina can now be seen in two locations on the Visit Florida website. And I send out a sincere thank you to Mr. Rob Palace, we all know him, he coordinated with the Visit Florida technical support folks to get this 24/7 real-time video posted on Visit Florida, and then Tana Kendrick of the 2K Web Group provided the image stream link that links the Carabelle webcam with the Visit Florida website, so y'all go on there and just key in Carabelle, and you'll see all kinds of pictures that are there of Carabelle, I think that comes from Tana at Y2K, and then you'll see the video. And then Courtney and I met with a fencing company representative out at Tilly Miller Park this month, I can't remember when, so much has happened, and we went over the area that we'd like to see fenced in, including the restrooms, the playground area, and the pavilion, and he sent back a quote, so we have an idea of what fencing is going to cost, but she, Courtney, wants to get another, another quote. And then some grant funding may need to be moved from one project to another in that Firdapp, but ordinance, want to coordinate that with Brett Fox. I want to remind you all that we have an October 8 workshop at 2:00 PM for review and amendment suggestions to ordinance 199, that's our animal control ordinance for the city of Carabelle. Then on October the 15th, our regular CRA meeting at 1:30, and then on the clerk's report, I would like to schedule a special meeting in October, later in October, to, for review and revision of employees' wages for the few who have not received increases over the recent two or three years. And then, once again, we've fallen behind with our DEO 180-day requirement to hold a public hearing for adoption of the comprehensive plan, and the ARPC representing is, representative, the economic development person there is working with us, and they're going to send a request to the DEO to extend that, so we may be scheduling some special meetings later in October, and the first meeting in November to hold public hearings on this item. And then yesterday, I attended an all-day hemp summit sponsored and produced by the ARPC. The Hemp Farming Act of 2018 removes hemp with less than 3, 0.3% THC from the Schedule I Controlled Substance List. Hemp is now considered an ordinary agricultural commodity, and it can be, and that's ditchweed, it can be, cultivation, processing, and distribution of hemp became legal in Florida on January the 1st, and the ARPC and hundreds of others believe this is a perfect industry to replace much of the timber industry that was destroyed by Hurricane Michael. And we actually, at that summit yesterday, there was, it was standing room only, there were 260 seated and standing all around the room for most of the day, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they had 20 on the waiting list, and they will have another summit in Jackson County geared more toward the farmers in that area, and I'll be going to that on November the 13th. And that's all I have, so we'll move to the attorney's report.
All right, I have.
Okay, all right.
And actually, Frank, before you, Commissioner Mathis, before you leave, two quick items. One is, just to let everybody know, the Potteau trial is scheduled for December 12th now, and just want to keep everybody aware of that, that's still grinding forward. And then, as far as Dr. Grantham, we filed our claim, they had opened a probate in the Dr. Grantham matter, we filed our claim, and that is slowly grinding forward, we don't have anything to consider yet on it. Typically, what's going to happen is they will reach out to us and try to settle that claim as part of his rapid, his estate, so I'll, of course, bring any offers, any issues in that to the commission. And then, the next item, I have asked Commissioner Mathis, I think he should recuse himself on it, it relates to, and we'll go through it, reimbursement for insurance premiums, and since it is pecuniary, potential pecuniary benefit to him, he needs to recuse himself from the proceeding on this aspect of it.
Okay. We'll see you in a little bit.
Bye. Be careful out there. Two tears up, doesn't it? Commissioner Mathis, through his attorney, Pat Floyd, submitted an offer to the city or a request to the city to settle the matter of basically what he considers past due insurance premium reimbursements, going back, all the way back to January 2006, to the city for the sum of $12,000, the, and so that's, that came in the form of a letter. There's been various calculations, trying to look at just kind of the basis for the claim, and we've run different numbers, I have talked to the mayor about it as well, I know she's run some numbers, but all of the numbers are in excess of $12,000, in the light most favorable to Commissioner Mathis. The issues that we've had historically is, and this one's interesting, because it goes all the way back to 2006, which is before the Affordable Care Act went into effect in 2010. The commission has discussed this, I'd say, two years ago, in the context of the Affordable Care Act, and we had heartburn, and we got opinions from the accountants and everything else, and we decided to move ahead with a limited reimbursement, while the Affordable Care Act was in effect, or basically from, maybe, from 2007, 2017 or something.
The reimbursement is not limited that they're doing now, so.
And there was just talk, again, of the law, what was technically appropriate, what was not, wasn't that, we moved ahead and still reimburse to some extent, to various levels with different commissioners, and what's interesting about this one is, again, it's sort of a mix, because it predates the Affordable Care Act, when we were doing it with employees and commissioners. the Affordable Care Act, when we were doing it with employees and commissioners. And then we kind of agonized over it a bit two years ago and continued to reimburse. And then just recently, we did get a notice from the accountant saying that they have loosened the rules to allow for more reimbursement. But with all that kind of being said, and certainly throw questions at me if I can answer them, I will, and you don't have to make a decision tonight, but wanted to get this all rolling so we don't have Pat Floyd breathing down her neck. And again, the offer, as far as the numbers that we've been provided, the offer is less than, and it's based generally on about $130 a month during his time in office, and it's less than the settlement offer that's been thrown out there.
Well, of course, you know, I looked at it, looked at it closer, and so, did you, did they all get a copy of this letter?
I did.
Okay. So basically, it says that the city manager then in 2006 authorized a $130 a month reimbursement to happen to elected officials and city employees who had out-of-pocket insurance premium expenses. And Mr. Mathis wasn't, Commissioner Mathis wasn't made aware of that back then. And so, from January 2006 to, they're saying, to December of 2017 is 12 years, and at $130 a month, which was his out-of-pocket expense.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you for one second.
Yes.
Only that I cut it down to 10, because I believe he was out of office during that period of time for two years.
Okay. Well, I do have, I do have a solution to this, so, but anyway, you see their calculations there, and they're calculating out $18,720. So what was it when you?
15-6.
$18,720.
Sorry, 15-6.
$18,720.
If you deduct the two years.
Okay. Now, the Affordable Care Act became effective, most of, it was voted in in '10, something of March or January of 2010. But it, none of the provisions became effective till January 1st, 2014. Our reimbursement was discontinued, when we learned that it was illegal to give these reimbursements with the Affordable Care Act now in effect, we learned that in March of 2016, and we discontinued that for about a year and a half, until the commissioners vote theirselves in to get payments. And so, if you, if you take the months from January 26, when Mr. John McGinnis put that in effect, to January 14, when the actual Affordable Healthcare Act came into play, the provisions actually went into play, that's 96 months or eight years. And $130 out of Mr. Commissioner Mathis' pocket for eight years is $12,480. And I'll let you go ahead and make a motion right now to reimburse Commissioner Mathis $12,480 retroactive for his $130 monthly out-of-pocket insurance premiums, his costs that were legal from January 1st, 2016, to January 2nd, 2014, and also that no further reimbursements will be made to any employees or elected officials while this practice continues to be illegal under the Affordable Care Act, as we've written up and have findings in our financial statement, that this is not, it's not legal to do this. And we, there will be some allowances coming January 1st, 2020, but we need to get into a plan that the IRS has to allow these insurance reimbursements. That, that's, that last explanation doesn't have to be included in my motion, but I do motion for him that $12,480 for the years that the Affordable Care Act was legal, and that going forward, no reimbursements will be made to any employees or elected officials while this practice, while this continues to be illegal under the Affordable Care Act.
And the mayor before, the motion is, really, that's sort of two issues, right? And that's fine, obviously, the commission can consider whatever it wants to consider. As far as Commissioner Mathis being entitled to reimbursement, certainly got that out and clear. As far as continuing what was voted in after a lot of back and forth and discussion, and I looked at things, but that's not my area of expertise, that's why we kind of kicked that hot potato over to Mark.
But we have a motion, do we have a second? And then we'll have discussion?
Sure, sure.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. So now we'll have discussion.
Can I get that dollar now one more time?
$12,480.
Make sure I understand it clearly, what we're talking about is essentially undoing what was voted on a couple of years ago. That we don't think, basically, there will be no reimbursement until we get it figured out January 1 of 2020. Just so everybody understands that, that this is a double, this is...
A double whammy.
Double whammy, yeah.
So what we're going to do is pay him what we owe him. We're going to cut out the 130 a month they're paying us now for not being on state and city insurance.
I think, I think you're getting 130, I think he gets, or Commissioner Melander gets like 340 or 60 or something.
And I want to make this clear, that that 130 is a lot cheaper than meat dropping the state insurance. And going on the city, it's going to cost the city about $1,200 a month if I, but if it's illegal, we don't need to do it. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'm not, I'm in disagreement with it being illegal. The Affordable Care Act is not intact as it was two years ago. If anyone watches the news and talks to folks, they know that the Affordable Care Act is not even recognized. I can't present that to you in writing, but the Affordable Care Act is not intact. That's public knowledge.
That's right.
So with the way the motion's presented, I have a little issue with it. And I have another question, and I have a statement and a question. The statement is, if, if an individual is due fair compensation legitimately, they are, okay? But my next question is, with this request, are we compensating Commissioner Mathis in any other way for insurance that we haven't looked at?
They refer to the supplemental insurance policy that the city pays.
If he's, if he's due money, if, I'm good with it, don't have a problem with it. But I do know that we're, that the city, we, the city is compensating in another manner other than what we've been discussing here right now.
And that's right. And again, not that I'm, I mean, certainly, the commission can do as they please, meaning, have a kind of multi-part motion, is, as far as compensation or, yeah, compensation due to Commissioner Mathis, I think, you know, Commissioner Walden kind of put it, that is the basis. Like, and again, I'm keeping this very simple, I'm not looking at all the federal regulations or anything else. It is, historically, and I think it's why back in the John McGinnis days, the city was very glad to pay, reimburse folks who were on their spouses or on some other insurance program, that it saved the city a lot of money.
Correct.
And I believe, and certainly staff can correct me, because I'm, again, intimately involved in this either, but Commissioner Mathis is on, you know, pays his Medicaid, Medicare premium, then there's a supplemental policy that gives him enhanced kind of benefits that is paid for by the city. So he wouldn't be entitled to any compensation, you know, he's already getting that covered, but his out-of-pocket for basically not going on private insurance at his age has saved the city a whole lot of money, you know? However, what the mayor brings up is the issue that we wrestled with for a couple of months, a couple of years ago, which is the legality of this compensation-style program when the Affordable Care Act is in force and effect, and it was years ago, now it has, it's a little tattered, and I'm not, again, I don't pretend to understand the enforceability of it or the pieces of it that are still intact and the pieces that aren't, and all that. But, and the motion is what it is. I would, I always prefer separate, maybe it's on a different subject, but that's not my place.
Let me call for her.
I don't make a statement for you, but...
Okay, all right.
I'm going to go along with the mayor. She says we're doing something illegal, we don't need to do it. So I'm going to go along with her recommendation. But this ain't over. We'll bring it up another meeting, another time. But if we owe Mr. Mathis, we need to pay Mr. Mathis. She says, she's the mayor, I think her word for it, and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I will say that this is from the financial statement and in their finding, we recommend the city a healthcare reimbursement, we recommend the city review its employer healthcare arrangement to become in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. In addition, we recommend the city monitor new regulations related to individual coverage, health reimbursement, reimbursement accounts that's expected to go into effect January the 1st, 2020. And then on the back page, the management corrective actions that the city administrator signed, that she, she did sign, that the city will review its employer healthcare arrangement to become in compliance with the Affordable Healthcare Act. So, and I do suggest in 26, 2020, in January, that we do review this and see if there's some type of a program that we need to get involved with, with the IRS. Our CPA may be able to help us, or this HR firm, if we end up hiring an HR firm, I know for sure that any of those would be able to help us on that. And they do allow reimbursement, but I think there's certain paperwork that needs to be filed with the IRS on that. And I'm not going to comment on whether or not I believe it's the law or not, I just have to go by what our CPAs tell us. I'm not going to claim to be an attorney or anything like that. So, is there any other discussion? Yes, sir?
I know this has been going on for quite a while, why is it in question whether it's legal or not? I mean, isn't that, what, we have a city attorney to have that determined so that they can bring that to you, whether it's legal or not? It can't be both ways.
I understand that.
Why has this been going on so long without a determination?
I, I don't know. All I know is what the CPA tells us, and the, you know, maybe, well, with an HR firm, we'll have someone that understands it better. I don't know if this is in the area of the attorney's expertise.
It's not.
So it's not.
But shouldn't, shouldn't he seek out the determination?
We did.
If it's not in his area of expertise, he should find out what the answer is so that you can all be informed when you make these decisions, not whether you don't know whether it's legal or not. Everybody just seems to not be sure at all.
Yeah, no, historically, we went through a lot of research and got a number of different opinions on this specific subject. The commission kind of digested all of them and voted on it a couple of years ago.
That's correct.
And there was differences...
So what is your determination, Dan? What did you determine to be?
I, I actually deferred to greater legal and accounting minds that deal with the Affordable Care Act specifically and all the US Code dealing with it. And the confusing part was, unlike engineering and many other subjects, you don't get a clear answer. It was a gray area, is the problem. And there were consequences if you kind of go, you know, too far with it and whatever else. But, I mean, there was all, it was a long, I mean, we spent months talking about this and going through it, and we're seeking opinions from multiple sources, and we got different opinions. And that's why, when we voted on it, again, we, yeah, we went a direction that obviously was contrary to, to some extent, and I say contrary, the, the citing to the, the annual report that the accountants do, obviously, they're telling us, hey, review it, they're not saying, hey, you're straight up in violation, because it was a gray area. They're just, and we do need, what's interesting is that in three months, maybe we can get a clear answer on it finally, you know? So that's good. We should, now we sent for again for the commission to, to look into, but to talk to the accountant, have him reply, and get it properly, you know, go through the process and have everybody on the same page, that's the way to do it.
All right, are we, are we ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of that? So we have Commissioner Allen, Mayor La Paz, Commissioner Walden, and you, sir?
I'm going to vote nay.
Okay.
I'm going to vote nay only for the reason stated already, because the motion to me is, we've got two motions there instead of one, in my opinion. I made the statement that I feel like that if anybody is due and entitled to their money, they deserve it. I think that's one motion, and the rest of it is another motion. So that's the only reason why I vote nay.
Okay, all right. We thank you for that clarification, and so then that motion carries.
I'll get him.
If he has anything else to say.
This is why we need the wisdom of Solomon sometimes. It's not always easy. Sometimes it's just need the best way out to solve a problem. That's why I'm afraid if you go along too long, this will work.
I don't know how far they had to go. I, I'm going to assume that he was finished with his report. Mr. Hartman, you're finished with your report? Okay, then, and then as soon as we can, you can see the city administrator's report.
All right, on September the 12th, Commissioner Melander and I attended an Economic Development Academy Achievement. We brought back some good information, some good networking, made some good contacts there. On September the 16th, I met with Evelyn Ramirez with the US Census Bureau. Ms. Ramirez is asking that the city form a complete count committee. And a complete count committee are volunteers that are established to increase awareness and motivate residents to respond to the 2020 census by dispelling myths and alleviating fears of our privacy and confidentiality for the census data. Some examples of activities that she's asking us to do would be to make a presentation to the senior center, reach out to the churches to distribute information, maybe contact the library and ask them if they could support us, maybe have a computer that set aside so that people can go in and fill out their census information. Do a booth at our events that we hold down at Harbor. Submit, give some coloring books out at the nest for the after-school program, kids color them, they take them home, the parents read them, and to make posts on our Facebook page. So I think we've got a couple of boards already, I don't know that we need to establish a new one, or we use maybe a planning design board, or the EDC board, or a combination of both. I understand there's probably people that set all these boards that don't want to do this, and I don't think that we should say that we have to do this, that maybe if there's people that want to volunteer for this, maybe we have people in the audience that want to volunteer. My idea would guess would not be to put a lot of time into this, that we have people that we, we give you, and, you know, hey, you reach out to the senior center, and maybe you contact the library, and we kind of divvy out the duties. I have a lot of information on the complete count committee and what it does, and activities that can be done. Anybody that's interested, I can pass along this information.
Yeah, and I asked you today, did, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get the lady's name, but did she give you a flyer that we can post on Facebook or put around, maybe at the library or something?
She didn't give me a flyer, there may be something in here. Or she, not, I can ask her for one, or there may be one of these pages in here, I can scan it and post it, and we can ask her to volunteer.
Okay. Because, and I told Courtney today that I believe that her productivity and pay scale is too valuable to be sitting on yet another committee. So, you know, you can spend time, I feel like, reaching out, trying to get some. So, you know, you can spend time, I feel like, reaching out, trying to get some folks and, you know, I'll help you and we can maybe advertise at the library and senior chamber and put a notice up at the senior center to see, you know, if you can get some people to call you that may want to participate.
And this is, this is an advisory board to the commission. This is just to push information out to the public. So I guess I'm just asking for permission from you guys to form a committee or to advertise for, to form a committee.
And will this committee have to meet, or will they just be volunteers that...
They would be volunteers. I would suspect they would meet a couple of times. She's saying they were doing the census. They start sending stuff out in the fall, the census isn't until actually like the spring of next year. So they would probably meet a couple of times, and then once it's over with, it's done. It's not going to be something that they keep doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just during the 2020 census.
Just during the 2020.
That's correct.
Is that okay with you all, if she reaches out and tries to form a committee or a group of folks? Okay.
All right, on September the 17th, I met with Mr. John Walls at McKissick Beach, who gave me a tour of the leased property and showed me all the survey markers and where the city leases were, where the boundary is. He shared some of the concerns of the property owners out there. Thought it was beneficial for our upcoming workshops that we're going to be having on the land management plan. On September the 19th, Russell and I met with the Water Management District and DEP on the Septic to Sewer Phase Two project. Russell will be speaking more about that under his report. And we do have Mr. Paul Thorpe, who's with the Water Management District here tonight. On the 27th, the mayor, Tim Sullivan, Bert Bolt, who's also on the aviation board, and I met with Danny Collins of Duke Energy to discuss the offer of $105,000 that they offered us for repairs at the airport. At the end of the meeting, we agreed for Kenley Horn to come out and mark the areas needing repairs and for Duke to manage the project and have the repairs done. CDVG grant, we are currently closing out the Avenue B CDVG grant, and will be eligible to apply for another commercial CDVG in the upcoming cycle due in March. Some ideas that have been tossed around with Marine Street lighting and sidewalks. We have some time, but we don't want to wait too long, so if you've got any suggestions, bring them to me and let me know because we'll have to start having planning meetings with Fred Fox, and he needs to get the paperwork submitted. But I think that was a good project we put in, and we're already doing Marine Street lighting, so that would pay for some of that. Tamra Allen Clark, if any of y'all have been by there, you may have noticed we've had the land cleared off. We've discussed in the past about doing some overflow parking in that area from the boat ramp, and now it can be accessed by vehicle. Me and the mayor have had some discussions about removing what's left of the roof and cleaning out the inside of the building. She took some good pictures, and it looks like there's some metal beams. So we don't necessarily want to remove those, but remove the wood that's caving in. Make it a little bit safer. If there's people going to be parking there and they're going to be on the property, then we need to reduce the liability. So we're not talking about taking down the building, we're talking about just cleaning it up so we can make repairs in the future. But right by, look at it, it looks really good. We're still taking applications for the hurricane loss mitigation program. They can be picked up here, I'll mail them to, I'll email them to. If you know anybody interested, just have them contact me. And Russell and I have a conference call scheduled tomorrow with the architect, the contractor, and the mechanical engineer who built this building to discuss some of the outstanding issues that we're still having.
That's all I have. All right, do you all have questions for Ms. Courtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I've got a couple of comments. I just want to assure Ms. Tamra Allen, who the park's named after, on the building over there, I've told Courtney, when she gets close to remove the roof, that we don't want the walls damaged or chipped or knocked or scraped up or to be, you know, they're going to have to be gentle, so that might cost a little more. But there's a lot of rotten wood doors and such on the inside, so, and I don't know about the windows. You know, I don't know what to, most all of them are broken. Should they, you know, go ahead and just take the glass out, probably, except for the blocks now. The blocks, I think...
If you can help, they don't take the blocks.
Okay. I think they're okay.
I think there's some wooden doors in there. I'm just trying to remove the wood and the debris.
Commissioner Allen has some comments.
A question, Tamra. Have they done all the investigating of oil spills and things, and that's cleared?
Right, well, it's, all the investigation has been completed, but there is a need for some follow-up paperwork to get us off the list. So we can't actually put anything new on that property until we get off the list of being a brownfield. But the contaminants have been removed, and all the proper detergents were added and all that stuff. So it's ready to roll. We can get off the list by completing a survey and filling out form. So then we could look at other things that could be done and paid for with other people's money. Okay. Then I have a question. The CDVG, this is a commercial grant, same style we did on Northwest Avenue B. Okay, so that means that any, now Northwest Avenue B, we know we got into a lot of expense for the CRA because to complete that entire project, that whole street, we ran down into residential areas. So that's where, you know, the CRA money had to come, and we learned that on a commercial CDVG opportunity, any inch that's of residential use, they won't fund that. And that's the same way of, actually, it's worse with USDA business. If there's residential in that direction, they won't even consider, so...
And there is a match component to that as well.
The...
I believe, was it $25,000 on the Avenue B project? But we got the maximum on Avenue B. We had the whole $650,000. I don't know that we'll have a project that big or not, or have to decide what we want to do.
So we'll discuss that. That's going to be on the agenda on the CRA meeting, and then we'll bring it back up. It's a real agenda item next month for this board. And then on the mitigation program, is there a deadline to submit those?
The state hasn't even got us to sign an agreement yet, so I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
That we're allowed to take applications, I can tell, they tell me.
All right, then, have you gotten any applications?
Yeah, I don't have.
Okay, good. Any other questions from the board? Then the city clerks report?
I have nothing other than if y'all want to schedule a special meeting.
Okay. And would you all, now, you know, we did budget for some small amount of monies to do a few raises for the employees who haven't had raises in the past couple of, three years. Do we want to have a meeting in October? Let's see, now, we've got our special meeting on the 8th for the ordinance 199 and CRA on the 15th. So something later in the month. Could you all meet the week of the 21st?
Any day.
Any day but Tuesday. The 21st or the 23rd, something like that, in the daytime?
21st, 23rd's an opportunity for it, I'd probably be at.
Okay, both days?
23rd.
Okay, 23rd.
21st, okay.
Okay.
I'll give a tip, 21st.
All right. And you, okay, you, all right, so 1:30, 2 o'clock?
1:30, so.
Okay. So we need a motion for that, to schedule a workshop for review and revision of the city employee's salary and wages. Is this going to be a workshop, or, excuse me, a special meeting?
I'll make a motion for that, right?
Second.
Okay. And that's the 21st, what time did we say?
13:30.
13:00.
Okay, 1:30, thank you. And that's Commissioner Allen made the motion. Commissioner Mathis, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Do you all have any questions for the...
I think that's second.
Commissioner Mathis? Do you all have any questions for Ms. Keisha? Okay. Then we'll move on to Mr. Russell, our Genovia's report.
Ross.
We're waiting now.
Thank you. I'll cover these first few projects very quickly and come back to the Lighthouse project. There's some important grant information to discuss there. So our DOT Small Communities Outreach Project, we know as The Hill, that's Fifth Street and Avenue D. The survey is underway there. Right now, that project is on schedule. On Avenue B, Courtney mentioned that the grant is being closed out. We're also closing out the permits for that project. Raw water is approved and ready to be implemented by Charlie. On the brine disposal system, we have submitted responses to the initial comments by DEP. The St. Joe feasibility study for utilities, we have not received, to my knowledge, that agreement has not been, has not been signed by St. Joe. And then on Landarc, we did some planning level review for abandoning some asbestos pipe in that community and also for expanding the water sewer. All right, so now to jump back to the Lighthouse project. As you are aware, there is a grant for the Phase Two of that project that we've been, the city's been notified that that would be awarded, and we actually have received the draft grant agreement, which I believe was in your packet for review. Just a quick summary, the Septic to Sewer project for Phase One is currently underway, and the design for that is at about 60% complete. The Septic to Sewer project for Phase Two is related to this grant agreement with the Water Management District. And this is NERDA funding that's related to Deepwater Horizon and Triumph dollars, which is, those dollars are administered by FDEP through the Water Management District to the City of Carriville. So this is the agreement between the Water Management District and the City of Carriville. And the grant amount is for $2,698,000. That's a 100% grant. Paul Thorpe with the Water Management District was gracious enough to offer to come and visit us today. If it pleases your word, I'd like to ask him to step to the podium. I know you may have some questions, I'm sure that the mayor does, from our discussions on this. Paul, do you like it?
Mayor La Paz and Commissioners, I'd just like to say we're really happy and grateful for the opportunity to work with the city on this project, as well as Phase One. Had a number of projects with you over the years, and I think they've all been very successful, very efficiently implemented, and...
I need to see what that noise might be here.
It's Russell.
Okay.
I was going to say, these types of projects together are an important part of the cumulative effort that we're all taking to help protect this bay out here that we have that's so important for the region and for the community. And also, things like the infrastructure is equally important for the quality of life for the community. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project.
And we appreciate it. And I just want to remind everyone that the Water Management District funded the storm water management project on the south end of Marine Street with the bio-retention cell there, the big baffle box that's in there, and resurfacing of that whole area. That was a major project, and it's just beautiful if you have the opportunity to drive by down there. I'm really proud of that. And I'm just tickled to death about this whole opportunity. It's 193, basically, or 163 Septic to, Septic Tank to Sewer, is that correct? And then 193, we'll look at water project.
Yes, that's combined for Phase One and Phase Two.
Yes, so I did meet for about an hour and a half with Russell on Tuesday, and Courtney and Charlie Painter, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, who's right there behind Russell. And we had reviewed the draft agreement in detail, and I asked, I had quite a few lists of questions for Russell, and after I reviewed that, I really feel, you know, I feel good about it. The Water and Sewer, though, I want to make sure the commission understand that because we're fiscally responsible here, and we're trying to watch after our dollars. And I want them to understand that our Water and Sewer Department budget will fund all of the project upfront. This is like a reimbursement-style grant, and that we can request for reimbursement no more often than once a month.
That's great. I believe that's how it's worded, and that's generally how it is. And we also like to be able to offer the opportunity to do invoicing on a cost and current basis, if that's helpful. So basically, that means you get an invoice, you can put that on an invoice to the district, you know, and then we would pay that invoice, or pay that invoice, and then with the next invoice, you would need to at least show proof of payment for the previous one. So we're no more than one...
All right. I think at this point, you know, we've reviewed the budget. At this point, certainly for the planning and design phase, you know, we're, once a month, is, you know, we can do according to your agreement there. And I think once a month will be good going forward unless something, something really huge happens all of a sudden. But I think, I think we'll be fine. It's a 2.7, basically 2.7 million dollar grant, and then 850 from the, from Phase One. So it's a big project and is a lot of money that the Water and Sewer Department could potentially be responsible for. So, you know, there's a lot of detailed reports, and I was concerned about that for our finance clerk who handles our grants. And Russell's assured me that Genovia will complete all of those reports and all the tasks and deliverables and all the payment reimbursement request forms, the quarterly progress reports, the final report. Genovia will do that, and the fee is included in that fee that's listed in the Task One in the scope of work. So, you know, I don't, I don't see any problem. I do want the commission, though, to know that there's one caveat in the agreement on the Task Two, I believe it is, that no work now can begin on the, and this is on Phase Two, no work can begin on the bidding and construction part of this project until the city provides documentation that the city has secured sufficient funding to move forward with the construction of the drinking water system as the companion project for the Lighthouse estate area. So that has resulted in the Courtney and Russell going to the DEP and working, and we have information on the SRF funding, possible SRF funding, so if you want to speak to that.
Yes, well, that's right. That's, we estimate that will be close to an 80% grant amount through the SRF funding. So it's a two-step process. There's a planning and design that needs to occur first. That's a 50-50 grant loan. Then there's the bidding and construction, that's a second part of the funding, and that will be close to an 80% grant amount.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Okay. I will say just quickly that we're looking at that loan application and preparing some financial information with that. And we've talked to Courtney and the mayor about having the city accountant review that information, just to back-check our numbers. But we are taking a close look at the financial impact.
And, okay, go ahead, sir.
You know, since I've lived here, I've always been concerned about the sewage going into our bay, which is the national area. And has there been any studies of how much influence goes in from that section? I know that was the main thing for the development of Florida, and we got a big grant, big grant in that, so we didn't have any pollution. But in other words, what I'm asking, how much will this increase? Do you have any numbers on that?
Offhand, I can't recite any. We did have some estimates as far as the pollutant load reduction... We did have some estimates as far as the pollutant load reduction that will result from this project. And we, I know we've talked with Russell and gone over some of those numbers in the past, and that we can, sorry, talk to you further and see if we need to update those and provide those for the commission as well.
Right. It was a calculation of the total nitrogen removal to the bay by removing these septic tanks. And we do have a calculation for that and a number. I can't remember what.
And he did, he had a report and a study on that for the total nitrogen load.
I'd like to see that.
And it's significant. So we're happy about that, too. So, and I did request Inovia to bring in our CPA just to review, like, in a way, a rate study, because we've got, and I'll remind you all, we've got three loans with the Water and Sewer Department now. We've got a $4,222,000 loan for the advanced wastewater treatment plant, $626,000 for the Carrabelle Water Plant, and $369,000 for the Landarch Water Plant. So, you know, this is a potential of adding two additional loans. But the one, as Keith has here, excuse me, Commissioner Walden shows, for the planning and design for the water part would be $112,000, the city's portion of the Water and Sewer. But we talked with Russell, I mean, excuse me, Charlie and Courtney, and we believe we can pay that off in two or three years, that 112. So that would just leave us with four loans instead of five. And Russell's going to follow up with DDP to see if there's a penalty to pay early, pay off early. So that's basically all I have to say for this minute. Sir, do you all have questions? Any further questions?
Just a comment. We appreciate your assistance in this, Paul. And any reduction, I know the figures would be impressive to look at on the reduction of the contamination, if you will, to the soil and to the bay. Any reduction is going to look plus.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I just feel like these, the steps that we've outlined here demonstrate a good, steady, and responsible growth of our Water and Sewer Department, taking small areas, communities, regions at a time. And this is a good opportunity to position the Carrabelle Water and Sewer Department to serve a large area of Eastern Franklin County, a larger area of Eastern Franklin. And this will begin our long-term goal to be a regional supplier of water and sewers, you know, what we have talked about for years. And, you know, as we continue to work with Summer Camp to the east, this will, you know, only enhance our goal to be a regional supplier. So I do, what we need tonight, then we need a vote for, from the commission to allow the mayor to sign the agreement. This is a draft agreement that we have right now. It's going to be fine-tuned.
Yep, yes, ma'am. So concurrently, we're working with the Department of Environmental Protection on the grant, which, as far as the scope of work, it's identical. And so, once we have that settled, we'll work with you all to see if there's any text revisions that are needed to make sure we're fully consistent with that. I wouldn't anticipate anything that would be of any substance.
Okay.
But we'll work closely with your staff on that.
I'm going to let the mayor sign that agreement.
All right, okay. That's good. I think it will be fine. In the event, I just, we don't have to. No one is moving. In the event that the agreement is finalized before our next meeting. So a motion to allow the mayor to sign the Lighthouse Estate's septic tank-to-sewer basement phase-to-agreement finalized by Commissioner Allen. Okay, second by Commissioner Mathis. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Thorpe, for coming. It's always a pleasure to see you.
And that concludes our.
Okay, thank you. And we appreciate your investigation. Just keep us informed. Okay, all right. So we have our advisory board reports now. The waterfront partnership?
We have no report this evening, ma'am.
Okay. But we had, Steve Allen did report a little bit, so I appreciate that.
Yes, that actually was going to be my report, but it's really his report.
Okay. And so, we don't have an Economic Development Council report this evening. They didn't meet this past month. The Carrabelle Aviation Advisory Board?
Good evening, everybody. After the last meeting, we talked, well, last meeting, we talked about the problem of the lightning out there. I didn't put this in the report, but shortly after the meeting, we had another problem.
I think we got a real problem.
So we had another problem after the last meeting. The gate company technician came out there, and I talked to him, and he had just come from either Tyndale or Eglin, I'm not sure which. But they had a very similar problem, where there's an electrical building near their gate, and what they figured, the power going in and out there, it's what's attracting the lightning to that area. And what they, what their solution was to put lightning resistors on the fence grounded, quite a distance, grounded through, to attract the lightning and let it go to the ground. So I ran that by the engineers, and we're going to try to include that in either the new fuel system or the defense project, whatever, FDOT, wherever we get the money from FDOT. But they said that eliminated the problem for them, so we're hoping for the same. Anybody got any questions?
We're just, we're reviewing all of the discussions and offers that Duke Energy, we're trying to, we're still trying to work it out.
Right. There was some misunderstanding about the first meeting we had, and, you know, as time goes on, things get a little foggy. So we talked about all that, and we tried to reach an agreement. He did, as Courtney said, said that, you know, we go out there, mark there, and they would take care of it. But then again, he said he was going to a meeting with a group and going to run everything through that we talked about. So it's still, it's not defined for sure as far as I like to tell. We're still negotiating a little bit. Fortunately, this time, we had, we recorded the meeting. We were reviewing the meeting minutes, and I've got a good document to, I'll pass through Courtney, that we'll send to Duke Energy to make sure that they agree with what we just covered in the meeting, and we'll go from there.
And we haven't signed an agreement yet or no memorandum of understanding. We're still trying to work out, fine-tune the details.
Right. But they did assure that they were going to repair the.
They said it's not uncommon when they cause damages during staging, they go back and repair their damage that they do. So it's just a matter of coming to terms.
Yes.
What was damaged. Okay? All right, thank you. And then the next report is from our Carrabelle HR Committee, Mr. Tom Magnin.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. And I'm here to report on a meeting that was held yesterday with a HR consultant firm who applied to the advertisement. Name of the firm is Evergreen Solutions. We spoke to a representative on the phone at the meeting with myself, Tony, and Courtney, and Quinell Fox, who was the company representative. To sign up the meeting, we had three things that I thought were important came up. One is that while it is an HR consultant firm, they don't have any lawyer, a lawyer on the staff there. Ms. Fox did say that, that they have a lot of experience, a lot of years of experience in the firm, and have never had a complaint about any legality to any of the contracts that they have been responsible for. Their cost is $250 per hour for any work that they do. I think what was unclear to us was just how many hours that would take to complete what was on the advertisement specification package. And I think that was what was discussed mostly in the meeting, is trying to give her an idea of all that was involved in meeting the needs of the city for what we're asking for. And in the report I, that everybody got tonight, I think, we went over the seven points, which included the policy manual and a review of the policy manual, and whether or not they would be able to see what policies are not followed right now, or what policies are obsolete, or what practices needed to be added to that policy manual. And she said that they would be able to do that. As far as wage and salary and benefit comparisons to other similar cities, she did say that they would be able to do that and could compare us to any city, even a big city like Miami. But, you know, I think what we're really looking for is somebody that can compare the employees here and the benefits, wages, and salaries to a similar city. I think we told them, it was my impression, and Tony and Courtney can correct me on this, that that was one of their specialties, doing wage and salary and benefit comparisons. We think that they, she, Ms. Fox, did respond also that she'd be able to review the employee files and make sure that everything was in compliance there. Would be able to look at the labor laws and see that would follow all the appropriate labor laws that we set out in the advertisement package. She could put together a five-to-six-hour orientation for department heads on managing employee situations and policies. And I think we brought up specifically the grievance policy and thought that that was something that we felt needed to be looked at and some changes made on it. Also, she would be able to, their firm would be able to conduct the interviews that were requested with department heads, the mayor, and the HR person that's on the commission, which of course is Tony, and Courtney as well. So, but, you know, all the, I think one of the things that we were trying to do is give her as much information as we could about the structure of the city. And I know that Courtney sent an email today, because she copied me on the email, and gave her some more details about the number of employees and what jobs are available, how many department heads there are, population of the city, and things of that nature. So really, I think that Evergreen Solutions, they sounded like a, you know, a competent firm. I don't know if they're what you're looking for or not. So I think if you read our, read the report and see what they said, and there's another step, you know, another meeting with them will be necessary in order to see what they come up with as far as how many hours are going to be involved in that, since it's an hourly, we're paying hourly for the services. And so that remains to be seen, just what they're going to come up with. And she's going to be talking to the vice president of the firm with the information that we gave her. So I think that was about it. Did you need to add anything, Tony or Courtney, to that?
I think you said it in, I know that we had voted before to mail it out to the five firms, and that's to be mailed to you. And since then, I've got the name that the county uses for their HR consultant. I'd like permission to mail it out. If I can get several more, I'll ballot.
I think that's great. I think I do.
That's basically what Mr. Tom just did. He did a great job of giving you an overview from Evergreen at what they had submitted us in our conversation we had with them yesterday. And he wasn't trying to give you a report on what we have and a recommendation at this point. And I go with Courtney, we need to, my feeling is, is resubmit, let Courtney resubmit, choose another one or two attorneys, because we only received two to begin with. And resubmit to additional attorneys or firms, if you will. Because we needed to add item number seven on our list to it to resubmit it anyway. So resubmit it, broaden the area, and let's see what we get.
It may be asked, then, you know, just on the side, are they familiar with the Affordable Care Act and the health insurance reimbursement, the new program that's going to be starting January 1st?
She did say, that's why I sent her another email, to add some more information, that more information she had about the city and what services we provide, and how many people we service, and help them come up with an occupancy estimate that they could provide.
Okay. That's very good. I think if you've got a couple or more, two or three in mind, it's, I think it's a great idea. Is that all right with the other commissioners to move forward on that? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Magnin? Anything else?
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine. And so although we have only three items left on the agenda, a couple of them could extend out. So we're going to take a point of personal request here and take a recess for about five minutes. Okay, we'll reconvene. It's our regular commission meeting, October 3rd, 2019. We're going to have new business now. Item one, discussion and possible action regarding promotion of Officer Lawrence Brannan. And Officer Lawrence Brannan isn't with us this evening, and the chief is on vacation. But the chief told me that he had talked to each of you all, or, I asked him, he said, yes, he did. And I've discussed it in detail with the chief, that he doesn't necessarily need a deputy. He's experienced that now, but he, as he told Courtney and I, needs someone to be in charge when he's off duty or out of town, and or out of town. Do you have anything to add to that, Courtney?
He has asked if we can tell lieutenant. Tell lieutenant. If it's tied, if it's tied on here.
Well, we don't, we don't have that, but I would ask if, you know, do we want to discuss the pay raise this evening? We certainly can do that. I'm prepared to do it. Or we can discuss the pay raise per hour at the meeting when we have our special meeting to discuss wages for some of the other folks.
Mayor? I discussed it with the chief as well, just like the rest of you guys. And I, this is what I said to him. First of all, if we're going to stay in keeping with our HR for our employees and stay consistent, first of all, we need to develop a position description, and the chief needs to be a part of that. He actually needs to develop the position description. We shouldn't be the same as a deputy chief. We have a position description for a deputy chief, but not for a lieutenant or sergeant. And at that point, discuss a salary range, because right now, we don't have one. And I would suggest that we either move this to the special meeting that we set, what day was it, the 21st? And not try to make those decisions tonight without a position description and a salary range. And hopefully, the chief will be back by then, will he not? Courtney?
He's gone for two weeks.
Will he be back then or not?
21st today is the fourth.
Yes, he should be back. But I do know that if he gets back that day, he won't have an opportunity to develop a position description and then go before the HR committee, and then it could come back and go before this committee, you know, all the steps that has been done. I mean, we're looking at two months on that, possibly.
I want to say, our police chief's out of town right now. We have basically nobody in charge.
Ms. Courtney, and.
Well, she's not a law.
I know. We have, Mr. Brannan is the most senior, so, you know, that's what we have.
Can we go ahead and promote him? Pay raises later, and put the paid back pay for the time that he served us.
That's what, if we do, if we do promote him this evening, I would request retroactive pay once we get the pay negotiated. And I mean, it's up to this board to whether or not we want to go ahead and do the promotion or not. So, you know, that's why it's before this board.
Mr. Blommer, just, we don't have a position for that right now. Mr. owner, just, we have, we don't have a position for that right now.
It's, it's not unusual in management, in my, in my experience, and Gary and I talked about this as well, and unofficially, he's actually done that now. Lawrence is kind of in charge while he's gone with Courtney. And I won't say he's in charge, but he's left to kind of oversee with Courtney, I assume, as Gary's gone. Courtney naturally is the city administrator. But it's not unusual for a manager or supervisor to leave one of his senior and most experienced employees in charge in their absence.
That's not unusual. And I, but I will say, if we're going to kind of try to refer back to our past work experiences, I know I've worked for a company that had over 50,000 employees for quite some time, and another company that had over 4,000 employees, and it's hard to compare my experience with that, with this. I can use it for leadership and, and setting examples, but whenever it gets down to the hardcore stuff, it's, it's difficult to say, well, you know, Eastern Airlines, they, they handled it this way, because they had a, you know, tremendous staff to reach out to, and options and alternatives that we don't have with a small police department staff that has, how many employees? Four, five right now?
Four full-time.
Four full-time, so, and one part-time. So, it's, it's up to the, it's up to the board to?
I'll make the motion. We promote it.
Okay. We have that motion by Commissioner Mathis to go ahead and to promote Officer Brandon to lieutenant. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have that second by Commissioner Allen, and discussion. Is there further discussion? Okay, I, I would like to see as soon as possible that a position description is developed. If the HR committee has to hold a special meeting to do that, so that possibly we can get that before, what's this, October, get that on the, on the, on the commission meeting next, next November the 5th meeting. Get that description up there for us to, okay? And then on the, today, we have our special meeting for wages on the 21st, or we can discuss wages now, whatever this board, but we'll go ahead and make the motion right now. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. And was everyone in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Melander, because Ms. Keisha, okay, all right. We're answering. Okay. Do we want to discuss the pay or for now Lieutenant Brandon, or do we want to postpone that?
I think we should postpone.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
I want to say, decide the payback pay.
Retroactive.
Okay. So Courtney, when you speak with Lieutenant Brandon, please let him know that we will, we have agreed in principle to make that retroactive. To, when is the first pay, payday of this upcoming? Saturday? First?
It'll start.
Okay, retroactive to this coming Saturday. You'll, you'll be one day promoted without, okay? All right then. Item two, discussion and possible action regarding special exception for residential use at 301 Marine Street for a, at Just Right Marine, that is zoned C1. Okay. Excuse me, C2. And I've got C1 on my, and Ms. Keisha and I went around about that. That is C2, Commercial Fishing District.
This matter came, this matter came before the P&amp;Z, and they unanimously approved it, recommended it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Chris Langston. I'm here to represent Jack Skellington at 301. I want to show you the rendering. I'm here about a proposal for a special exception to allow residential above commercial buildings and commercial lots as, that are currently zoned C2. There is a history here. This exact same special exception was granted historic, you know, I don't want to say historically, but several years ago. For whatever reason, Mr. Skellington wanted them to complete construction in the time allowed in the special exception, so things have kind of changed. We've got his dock permit, eight-slip dock permit out front, and we're kind of wanting to readdress this, and I'm here before you tonight to ask for the special exception to allow that.
So you're asking for a residential special exception use at 301 Marine Street?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay.
Just, sorry, by way of background as well, Mr. Langston, it was asked of me whether the old special exception is still good, and I advised him that he need to come back to the city to, basically, request a second.
Now, I did sit in on the planning and zoning meeting, and they compared this request to the Rex Theater and the pharmacy and Rio Carabelle. And I just, but there was no discussion that that is a C1 district compared to where this special exception request is the C2 district, and it's, it's commercial fishing. And so I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we understand that we're setting a precedence here in the C2 district. We have one that I know of. Somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, residence over a business in the C2 district where Mr. Crowder owns the property. It's a package store on Highway 98 and a lounge. There is a residence above there, has been for years, I think. You know, some of our elders were, lived up there. Someone told me that they lived there when they were youngsters. So that's been there, and grandfathered in, even when the comp plan was developed back in 2006. So, you know, at this point, we have no other residential area. We've got concerned about, concerns, Mr. Skip Frank brought it up, residents in the actual downtown Carabelle. We did approve a residence in the building right next to the Dollar General, but we, the owner was here. We asked that owner, is our clothing going to be hanging on the line? Cars up on blocks in the yard, you know, because it's right downtown in our, in our commercial district. We don't have the owner of the property here. Not real sure if that's what we can be assured of. I would say parking, what's, what's the parking going to be like over here on your, on your special exception above the Just Right Marine? How's the parking going to go for that, sir?
Not sure yet. It's a conceptual right now. Of course, when we get ready to build it, we're going to have to go through this process. We're going to have to go to the building department and get something approved. Right now, I think there was a question whether it was going to be attached or detached. We don't even know exactly if attached to the commercial building above it, and...
Right. If you're going to build above the building, want it to be attached? I would hope if you're going to build directly above that Just Right Marine?
And that's something that we haven't discussed yet. I mean, there's several signs that we've talked about.
What are you asking for?
A special exception to have it allowed.
Have what allowed?
Residential above the commercial.
Above, above Just Right Marine?
That is correct.
At 301?
Right.
Okay. That's what you're asking?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
The residential part, is that going to be for people coming in for rooms, or is it going to be for permanent residence?
That too. It could be a number of things. It could be work and home. It could be people, like I said, I just got the dock permit extended by D E B, we fixed to put in an eight-slip dock, so you may have weekend rentals. And there again, everything's got a price, so it may be somebody that would live in a permanent.
But yet, you don't, you don't know how the parking's going to be handled, because Just Right Marine is there now, and they don't have enough room. They've got, you know, their, their implements and boats out all over the street. They're running their business in, in a city-owned public property. So where, if these, if you're going to have a house above the Just Right Marine, where are these people going to park?
Right there at the street ending, they could. I mean, you can extend Just Right out onto the street ending. These are two different lots. You've got the street ending, and then you've got 301. And what we're asking for is a special exception. If we go above it, we can, we're also talking about expanding Just Right a little bit, giving them a little bit more room to operate. And of course, we'll go with two residential units up top. That's kind of what I was saying to P&amp;Z.
Up top on the, on the Just Right Marine?
Above Just Right, and which probably would come out over the street ending. Now, that's going to leave some space, but like I said, I haven't got to the point where we've got an engineered set of drawings. I mean, this was, this, this here is approved one time before, and it's, it's something that, like I said, it's been approved. I'm just asking for it approved again. This is the first step.
Where is Just Right Marine?
Actually, just right here would be Just Right Marine. And then, like I said, you're going to have some expansion, and then you'll have residential up top with the commercial down below.
You've got a 35-foot high limit that we?
That is correct. If I'm not mistaken, I'd see a 35.
That looks like it's going to be in the ramp area. There's a little ramp right next to it.
Ramp area.
Yeah. You've got Just Right Marine, then there's a little work area, and then a ramp.
Right. That, that, that's the street, that's the old street ending.
Uh-huh.
And that street ending actually gives you much more square footage. And with that being said, as you can see...
You're having it built on the street.
It's private property now.
It's private property. We, we bought the, he purchased the street, and he owns both Just Right Marine and the lot next door.
I got you.
And that's what we're, that's what we're willing to develop. You've got Just Right Marine already, where you are talking about expansion with two residential units up top.
Bear in mind, this is, this did get confusing a little bit at P&amp;Z, because all this before the commission is all that was before P&amp;Z. We got into all kinds of, how is it going to be developed and all this and that? But what the, is before the commission on the special exception is simply, is this a location at which we would allow residential use in conjunction with the commercial or vice, residential use by special exception, period? He has to come back at the time he goes for any design or, or development order or anything else on this. And that's more, and it's fine to ask about these things, but it's not the basis necessarily for the decision. That comes in when you're, he's got to comply with all the partner requirements and everything else to get it developed or to build it.
So we can't really ask him about?
You certainly can't. You, you can ask.
Parking, or, you know, every time we get another new residence on or near the water, for instance, down south, the most southern new resident, down there, a new house, complains about the noise, the bands. And we've got, Ms. The Harrys has a band in the courtyard every weekend, and so, you know, when we, you know, I just don't think residential is, is compatible right next door to a, you know, a loud, you know, a place that has loud music. And, and we know that there's a, parking is a major issue there. This also reduces the opportunity for CDBG funding, you know? Now, we, we get this another fee of residential, we can't, we can't apply our CDBG commercial grant to it. So, you know, it's just, it's not with the comp plan. Of course, it's allowed by special exception with the comp plan, but it's not with the comp plan. It's not in the future land use maps to continue to put residents in the commercial district, C2 district. I mean, I, you know, I, I'm just going to go ahead and motion to deny the special exception request for the residential use of 301 Marine Street. I've made that motion. If we get a second? If we don't?
I'll second.
If it's on the record, okay. We have a second by Commissioner Mathis, and a motion by, the motion is by Mayor LaPass, second by Commissioner Mathis. Discussion. Now, to the planning and zoning members that are here, that, Mr. Skip, you were in that meeting, I don't, but Ms. Patty was. We generally, he wasn't, he's not on planning and zoning. Mark Veltcher is, though, and I just want to address you that, you know, I, I appreciate the service you do, and I have told you both that, and, and we most generally accept your, your recommendation. But after giving it further thought and realizing that it's a C2 district and we don't have, that's not a common practice in the C2 districts, I just, I just feel like it's not good planning for commercial growth and, and future enhancement of our commercial district to put some, some residential in there. So, is there, I'll let someone else talk. Discussion from anyone else?
We got any public comment?
Okay, Mr. Christie?
Could we see the map, please?
Yeah, I can turn it around, please. I don't see any of Jerry's boats there. Or it's trash.
I'm Louis Christie, and I own property pretty much across the street from where this proposal is, a little catty corner possibly. And I brought some issues up at the P&amp;Z meeting as well, and I felt like people did listen, but it almost felt like a preconceived notion that this was going to go ahead to the P&amp;Z, because my, my concerns are some of what the mayor has just said. You know, we have very limited commercial space in, in the downtown area that aligns the water. And if, the purpose of the C2, I think, was to keep it like a working waterfront, a commercial working waterfront with fishing, seafood industry, something like that to be going on. And, you know, this, to me, this request is not just for something built above an existing structure. This is to take a vacant, separate piece of property next door to it and convert that into a residential area as well. I think the issue of having parking is an issue right now for our store, for the store Christie's Cottage Living, that I own that building there. The parking for some downtown, I've got people parking in front of mine, just to be able to go to Lulu's Cafe around the corner. Parking is a real issue. And to me, if you agree to approve this, the residential, then I think we're going to have a cascading effect. We've got the old barber shop next door, a lot of space between that, Franklin Realty. So it's just, it, it's like a domino effect. You start there, it's residence, it's residential, it's residential, all the way around the corner, back over to Crowder, and then turn where the, the visitor center is, tear that down, Coastal Realty, and then you just have that whole corner. It's a residential. If that's the plan, then go back and change your comp plan you're working on right now. I mean, it shows it's C2, all the way around, the whole harbor. It doesn't show residential. We're going to lose the, the ability to have the grant, like the mayor said. If you keep putting residential in there, then you, you can't achieve that grant. I'm also concerned that, that we're, we actually are, seem like the city is stopping business development in some cases, because, you know, there's opportunities there for restaurants to come in, other seafood industry to come in, put something on the shore. But if, if, if something can't be sold like beer or wine in a restaurant, you can't have a fancy restaurant come in and set up or something that's a little bit upscale like the Owl and Applejack Cola. They make their money on beer and wine. You just can't have anything more than a, like a Lulu's Cafe downtown to be able to, to bring people in. If they can't have beer and wine with their seafood and oysters, they're just not going to come. You're not going to be successful. And if, if you don't do something to change to enhance that, and that's a whole separate issue, I know it's different, and that's another vote with something else that needs to, I think, be brought before you guys. There's nothing left for that property for these people to do. I mean, if you own a piece of property and you can't get a restaurant to put in because there's something restricts you from having beer and wine and being successful, you, all you've got left is residential. And is that what you really want? Residential all the way around? I don't think so. I, I know as a business owner, I don't want that. I want more businesses downtown. I want people parking. I want them milling around, having three or four, five destinations in an immediate area that they can walk around to one to the other. That's what makes Applejack Cola successful. So we need a thriving business community downtown. We don't need more residential downtown. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, thank you. And, and this development of the second piece of property. I have a question, and Mr. Langston continues to say that the special exception is for just over the top. just over the top of Just Right Marine, but if the intention is to go onto another piece of property?
We expand, man, I'll say that.
Okay, I, I, I'm not, I want to do, bring up one thing that Mr. Christie spoke on is the, the opportunity to sell beer and wine. Right now, all the commissioners know, we have a, an alcoholic beverage ordinance 500-foot rule from a property of faith-based churches, and now we're going to take the C2 district, which is out of that, that 500-foot radius, and, and put properties on there that can't sell beer and wine. And that's, that's an excellent point that you brought up, Mr. Lewis, and I do appreciate that. So, and, and, and as he talks about this attaching or piggybacking onto, onto a commercial property, yes, I can see that being a domino effect going all the way around the river. Everybody's going to be connecting up to some, you know, to a commercial property and getting a quick fix residential use, and that's really not the long-term goal that we work for, to enhance our commercial district and, and have some economic development downtown. Did I see Mr. Bo wants to speak?
May I?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm Bo May, I'm also a downtown property owner. This is a slippery slope, and it is very reminiscent of what has happened, excuse me, at the motel, where the people coming into the, to the project were not very specifically held to the usage that they put into the building. And that's our responsibility to see that what happens is, there's a specific plan. You'd be better off without this drawing, which is the water side of the building and not the downtown side. C1, residential over businesses works, C2 is a whole different issue. I don't, I don't, no, I do know that if we don't build the downtown area, that businesses will have strip malls of Highway 98, and it, it won't be a, a community. It'll be just a succession of expensive, out-of-town, like all of those, out-of-town, part-time res- residentials. I just, my mind, excuse me a second there. I, I, I've heard the phrase, this, I've heard the phrase highest and best use thrown around several times, and it's highest and best used for the investors, the property owners who aren't here. It's not, not what's the highest and best use for that property for the city of Caribou and the citizens of Caribou. That's what I want to hear, and I don't hear that in this proposal. I hear that we're going to put residents on top of the Marine building, and we're going to attach that at some point, soon as we get foot in the door, we're going to expand just the building two blocks to, to 100 feet to the left or to the north.
Pure speculation right there.
Absolutely, pure speculation on your part, and on our part to resist that. I'm, I'm very much opposed to this idea.
Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Is there any comment from the commission members? Any comment? Okay, then I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
To deny the special exception. Any opposed denying the special exception? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, now we have one that may take a little while here. Item three, discussion of possible action regarding streets and roads and lay-down yards, security and equipment storage. Okay, that's discussion of possible action regarding streets and roads and lay-down yards, security and equipment storage, and I thought maybe Dustin would be here, but I don't see him. I wanted him to explain to us how and where the equipment is currently stored, the types of buildings they have there, and the lighting. I mean, perhaps some of the commissioners and Ms. Courtney could give us a brief description on how they operate over there.
It's a U-shape, so, so you know, you've been out there, and she's right, you're on one side, and we can touch the other. So, I guess it's on the south end of the property.
Courtney, it's really hard to be here, you see.
So, I guess it's the south end of the property that he has, he has a big building there, wood construction building, has two big double doors that open on one side, and I believe it has the two doors that open on the other side. So, that's where most of the power tools and things are stored. I do believe he keeps some of the lawnmowers under some pole barns that are out there also.
Are the pole barns enclosed?
No.
Okay. So, there was a theft, and I, I brought the report with me, but I have only three items of the report, and you and the chief, something keeps saying that there was like, there was four items, or?
I was told it was two weed eaters, a chainsaw, and a gas can.
Okay, so, all right, that's what I see, two, yes, two weed eaters, a chainsaw, and, and several gas cans, and then later on, a couple of days later, Mr. Massey told the chief that 100 gallons of diesel was also missing, but we decided not to pursue that per se.
It, well, Gary reported this stuff, he had, they had filled the diesel up in Detroit, but they hadn't ran it, so they don't really, it wasn't full at the time.
Okay.
So, he doesn't know, Dustin says he doesn't know if there was any diesel taken out.
Well, I understand that it was poles already been put out there for cameras to go on for security.
We had cameras on, we had, we, not at the time, but we did have solar powered cameras, and the camera had quit working, so it had been taken down. There was a, a camera, how much to say, because they don't want to breach security.
Yes.
There was a camera inside the building that apparently was not on.
I want, I talked to Dusty this afternoon, and I just want the public to know, this is our second time this building's been broken into. We've lost somewhere between 15, 20,000 dollars worth of equipment last year. We can't, we can't have this continue. We go down there, buy new equipment, put it back down there, they're coming back. I talked to Dusty and asked him what we could do to secure this. I had some suggestions, get portable, enclosed trailers to haul the tools in, he wasn't really keen on that. I asked him about putting shipping containers in there, because the same night they ripped us off over at the airport, they tried to break into one of those containers, and they couldn't get in, and that comes from the fleet team. So, I just want Dusty to do something to stop this, and I think that shipping container would be, because then, they'd better take a torch, they don't get in one of them.
Okay, what did he think about the shipping containers?
He was all for that. He said we, and I told him that I'd talked to Courtney about getting Duke Energy to drop us a pole in, putting LED lights about, so that light the yard up, and then, and Mr. Mike Locke just cleaned that property off in the back. Before, I was all woods, so we just opened, all they had to do was walk across the ditch, and they were in our yard. Dusty also suggested we put up an eight-foot fence around the property, at least through the back of the two sides, and install some security cameras.
And with, with Duke Energy come in and set in the pole, they could put the receptacle on the pole. That's why we had the solar cameras, we didn't have power out there.
Okay.
So, it, it was hard.
Is there any lighting out there now?
No.
Okay, so I would suggest, and I go along with all of those things, at least two light poles on each end, and then light, two lights coming off, you know, on each, so that there would be four lights.
Yeah, I, I suggested to Duke Energy deal, that way the power comes straight in off the power lines, there's no, if we hook it to, we have a power supply there, but we have inmates out there, they could just flip it off when we leave it.
But it can hook up, you know, like a security light in your backyard.
Yeah.
Duke Energy can put that in for us, and then we'll just pay the, the light bill.
I would, I would like to entertain a motion to have, give Courtney the authority to have this stuff done, to get shipping containers.
How many containers?
That, you and Dusty will have.
I have a suggestion.
Decide what you would.
But I do have a suggestion on the containers. My husband made the suggestion. Three containers, and he actually looked them up, you can get a 20-foot or 40-foot, because we're going to have eventually three trailers, and then they would have their trailers loaded up, and they would just back the trailer up into the container. They don't load and unload, and lock everything up, that way the trailers, you know, secure it well.
Do you want 20, 40?
I don't know how, I don't know how long their trailers are.
Whatever you and Dusty decide, I would also like to have that fence put up by certified people.
Yes, a fence, but now, we, we, we'll, we'll talk about fencing now. We got, what was it, like 130-foot square or 135? Tell them about the fencing quote that we got.
The fencing quote we got was about for 496 feet. It was a five-foot fence, black industrial fence for the harp. It had three walk-through gates and a drive-through gate, and the quote come in right at 13,000 dollars.
So, that just gives you an idea. I think we'd be looking more like an eight-foot fence.
Yeah, with.
Security fence.
You know, with the barbed wire on it, where the, the cage has to climb, it can climb over.
So, how about if Courtney gets a quote on that?
That's fine.
Because that could be, that could be $20,000.
It's going to be expensive.
That's, that's where I was going with it.
Here's the deal, we cannot, one of those zero turns are anywhere from six to 9,000 dollars a piece. We've already had one 9,000 dollar lawnmower stolen.
Well, now, my husband had another idea.
Yeah, let's deal.
He was full of ideas this afternoon. He said to fence in the containers only.
That's cool.
And then maybe that, that building, the pole building, then you wouldn't have to go around the whole property, just get whatever you're trying to secure.
Yeah, the pole building or the most important building, fence, put the containers nearby.
Fence the containers in.
With the drive gate and Constantine wire.
I don't know if the trailers, the only problem I was thinking is I don't know if the trailers will fit in the container, I don't know the size of those trailers, you know, they might.
They're small.
Yeah, well, if they're small, they'll go right in there, just put a little ramp and...
I think you put the equipment there and take it out.
Container is seven feet to eight inches wide.
Yeah, I don't know.
The door.
Trailers are wider than that.
But we'll have to see if that will work.
That's what I'm afraid of, the trailer with the fenders on, it's going to be wider.
Mr. Walden and I discussed today, too, that they don't have to put rates and shovels and the power tools and expensive stuff, and that's what needs to be in the container.
You put lights and a camera up there, that, that would be a big deterrent right there.
I would ask.
Because a thief, a bolt cutter takes care of locks.
Could we get a, like a schematic diagram of how we want this, and then take a better look at it? There you go. And I think. I mean, we could make a motion to do that.
Yes, that we have, we just start this, we don't want the, I'd suggest.
We've got all kinds of ideas here, so let's get a better look at it.
I know that chainsaw, because we need it, we're brand new, we just replaced it, the last time we got ripped off. So, we need, we, we need to do it planned out, but we need to do it as soon as possible.
Yes, as soon as possible.
We've got a lot of equipment in there, so.
I agree there.
And not only have we been hit, the county has been hit twice right outside of town here. They've lost several zero-turn lawnmowers. Whoever's doing this is coming back. If we replace that equipment, put it back out there, believe me, they're coming back.
Right.
Maybe you can get a quote on that fence, like how much it would be kind of per foot, and then you can kind of say, well, it's going to be this much for this area, you know?
With, with Constantine wire and eight-foot, you know, security fence, with the good, strong top railing, and strong line and fence post.
I know that there's, there's an anti-climb chain link, it's got a smaller square, and so you can't get your feet in it.
Yes.
And then, and also, you may even want to talk to the fence company about this, but by not providing a top rail, that's less support for someone to try to climb or about not providing the top rail.
So, is that, that, you would suggest that possibly?
I, I, I think so.
Yes, of course.
I'll talk to the fence manager.
We're, we're working on a brim of fence out there at the airport, seven-foot with a, a foot of Constantine wire on top of it. That's their secure, that's the FAA's solution to security fencing. We should have the cost from that, the per foot cost from that probably in the next week or so.
There you go.
Okay. And then, you're going to have to get, well, that's going to be down the road, a contractor to do that. We don't want to wait that long on, on a...
This should begin soon, I mean, everything's been approved, and we're just going to go over the, the cost estimates, but it should be ready to, to start looking for bidding.
Okay, so then, basically then, what we want to look at then is a seven-foot fence, not eight-foot, with the Constantine wire, foot of Constantine wire. Now, if, if they're going to put it around some buildings, we'll need, you know, drive gate, like I think we went 14 feet over, over here, and additional streetlights, Duke Energy put in two poles and then two, two LEDs on each one, spread out, some shipping containers, 20 feet or 40 feet, you'll have to coordinate that to see, you know, the length and the width, if the, if the trailers will fit in.
Do you want to not have the shipping containers? I mean, because they can lock this up, and they'll be secure, and we can call it a fence.
Right, I would only fence in just the containers.
Yes, I think that's a lot cheaper, a lot, yeah.
You go back there on the edge of that pond, I, I could take a set of bolt cutters, in five minutes, I'll have you a good open.
Oh, yes, yeah, if you know what I mean, yeah. Those containers are going to be pretty hard to get in.
Right.
Maybe we should electrify the fence.
Hey, they'll get a key to that.
That'll take care of the line.
Shoot them with the leg.
Put some alligators and snakes.
They can hunt, put the gate in.
So, I have a motion from, I have a motion from Commissioner Walden, is that correct? And, and what do you want to do now?
I want a...
I've, I've got right now, so you can correct me. Motion to have Courtney work with Dustin to get seven-foot fence with Constantine wire, storage containers, and additional lighting through Duke.
I'll sake of that, my bad.
Cameras.
Yeah, we want through cameras.
Yes, and we'd secure the cameras.
Because if we don't have something there, we just lit it up so they don't fall around.
You're right.
Yes, now we're in discussion, that was a motion by Christian Walden, second by Commissioner Mathis.
Just a suggestion for the, with the, with the poles, with the lights, if Duke can put a, a power plug at the top, because then you can get.
That's what Courtney said.
Yeah, because then you can get wireless cameras that, that have power there, and then you won't have to change batteries or have wire.
That's been our problem in the past, they had to be solar powered, because they weren't great when we first put them out there, but they didn't last.
And we, we discussed with the chief how we could like to put cameras, because the, you know, power over even that wire, now that's going to be exposed, they'll cut that, all that would have to be in a metal conduit, down the pole, under the ground, so wireless would be better. Get them to put, you know, a receptacle up there with at least four plugs, you know, because we may, we may want to plug something else in, you never know.
Might have more than one camera on a pole.
Yeah, put two.
You may need to shut them down a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to restrict it to two lights?
I'd say three.
Well, two poles with, say, this is the pole, and put a light here and a light here, and then down the way, you know, on each end maybe another pole and a light, you know?
I was, it's a pretty big yard.
Because they're going to charge us for that, too, that's about 5,000 dollars for if they put the poles in.
Yeah, and I wouldn't do the regular streetlights, I'd do those high-intensity LEDs, where you can light it up and form away from the residents, if you don't, if you don't pull... If you don't, if you don't point the lights, put them on the south side of the yard and point them away from the residents to the woods, then your residence is going to be saying something about the lighting.
Well, that's what, we'll need to be careful about that, whether it's.
Well, that goes back to what Commissioner Allen was saying. We kind of need a plan.
But Courtney can, can put it together and speak with Dustin, speak with Commissioner Walden and Commissioner Mathis, Streets and Roads Commissioner, and, and, you know, put something together. Then you can talk to us individually, given you the approval, if you want to go ahead and get shipping containers, you know.
That way they can walk.
Yeah, right away.
It's more secure than it is.
Well, if we get the containers, the lights, the fence can come later. Right now, we just need that equipment secured.
And we can work on this other stuff, you know, within the next couple of months.
And set some of the graveyard, I'll do some new ways for it later.
Okay, then. Is that, okay, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
I need a second.
Oh, we had that, Walden and then Mathis. And so everyone said they were in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and so any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. And then I'm thinking, you know, over the years, folks have been talking to me about the Streets and Roads Department and their, their work hours, the shifts, the number of days per week they work. I'm wondering about requesting an agenda item for the November meeting where we can discuss some of this and it would be like a two-part agenda item and discuss the number of days per week that the Streets and Roads works and the hours that they work. Would you all like to see something like that on the agenda?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll make up an agenda item then that says that. Be a two-part agenda item regarding Streets and Roads. There's no old business, so may I have a motion to reach a adjourn?
I'll do it to adjourn.
Okay, that's by Commissioner Allen. A second?
Second.
By Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.